This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting, December 6th, 2021, was included in the list of meetings published in the Curry News and Star Ledger. A notice of this meeting is also placed on the bulletin board at our hall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public. A copy of this statement shall be included in minutes of this meeting. Mayor Devon Sullivan.
Here.
Council members, Graham O'Brady.
Here.
Jane Cabuda.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Roger Broom.
Here.
Fred Weed.
Here.
Please join me in the black salatorium standing. As we now do too many meetings this year, Somerville community has lost yet another good friend, Lloyd Silverman, who owned and operated Lloyd's Furniture Store for many years, passed away recently. And I wasn't aware that Mr. Silverman didn't start as a furniture man. He actually founded a shop by moving on divisions. He was a laundry guy, by the way. It's just a, just a community man, a visionary, and a stalwart. He'll be missed, Lloyd Silverman. Thank you. We have minutes to approve on October 8th. I'll take a motion. Some move second.
Councilmember Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Cabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Graham Weed.
Yes. We have one departmental report as listed. The reports, I'll start to my far right with Councilman Mitchell.
Yeah, well, we had a very festive weekend. I hope everybody got a chance to participate. We had the lighting of the Christmas tree on Friday. Council was not involved in selecting the performance act or following the plan as it was. The following day, we had the fire in the fireplace parade. Maybe imagine things, but it seems to me it gets better every year. And then last night, the medical reception, they did three Christmas trees. They have, I think, 300 Christmas trees in the lodge that are dedicated to memory of past parishioners. And it was wrapping up a little beautiful ceremony. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Weed.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Pitts.
No report tonight.
Councilman Broom.
I would like to bring attention to one of our neighbors who's been doing a really great job, Brandon Stately and Pastor Chelsea of Good Shepherd. They're in church and they're doing a wonderful job collecting. They're calling it Angel Gifts. They've collected over 440 gifts for the holiday season for over 70 families that were affected by Ida. They asked for support from the town and the town showed up. So thank you to everyone who helped out with that. It was a definite group effort and it's great to see that at this time of year for the community to rally around and provide something so wonderful. So thank you and everybody who participated.
Thank you, Councilman. Dr. Brady.
Mr. Your Honor, Finance Committee is doing a risk analysis of the potential loss of tax revenue resulting from the public storm Friday. You know, over 130 apartments were destroyed and approximately 10 homes were either destroyed or damaged during the flood. The potential loss of revenue could be anywhere from $200,000 to $500,000 annually, depending upon the number of successful tax appeals, if any. So far, there haven't been any, but it will not affect the 2022 budget. It could have a significant impact on 2023. The deadline for tax appeals is April, so we are looking to economize as much as possible for the 2022 budget to prepare what could be an increase in property taxes. For the benefit of the public, taxes are based on the value of the land and improvements. I can't imagine that owners of flooded properties would continue paying full freight. However, if these properties are rehabilitated and restored, then there could be no loss of revenue. But we're going to continue looking into it because it is a serious issue that will affect our property taxes. I also attended a meeting of the Fire Museum on Friday, at which time we checked out the common wall between the burned building next to the museum on the north side. Our immediate concern is the condition of the wall as it could be impacted by heavy snow. And I've asked for a preliminary report to send to our insurer along with a plan to make the wall safe for the winter. And that's as far as we've gotten on the, on that issue of the Fire Museum. And that's all I have.
Thank you. President.
Yes, just a quick reminder, leaf pickup is continuing and will continue until next week. I want to remind residents of two big safety issues with that. Please don't put leaves over or down. Drains, because that's how it clogs and it's also a environmental hazard. And also just a reminder, don't park your car if you've been driving over a pile of leaves, because it gets very hot underneath and that can start fires that way. So just, you know, just a reminder to stay clear of them and that's all I have.
Two quick announcements, piggyback on what Mr. Mitchell reported before. We had many community events this past weekend. I want to send my thanks out to our police department, our fire and rescue squad, our SERC. You know, the public comes and they enjoy the event and they see the lights and they hear the sounds and they eat the cookies. They don't see the iceberg underneath. They don't see all the work that goes into the preparation. And if you would each extend to your departments, you know, thanks for a job well done. We want activity, we want crowds, but it takes a lot of preparation to make sure that the participants are safe. And I think we accomplished that and more to come on that. Finally, I just received an invitation about two hours ago for the wreaths across America. They will once again be participating at our new cemetery on South Ridge Street on the 18th of December. And tomorrow, for you history lovers out there, 80 years tomorrow. The quiet of a little island out in the middle of the Pacific was disturbed by unwanted visitors from, from the West. And there's probably not a family in this room tonight that doesn't have someone who was immediately or superficially affected by World War II. I can think of no better way to honor someone in your family that served in the armed forces either before, during, or after that conflict. I think the estimates on the deaths in World War II were in excess of 20 to 30 million and most of those were civilians. So I can't think of a better way to honor them than to purchase a wreath. Can you track down the website? I believe the Elts are getting involved in artedaires. You might be able to provide some information. Post that on our website as well. They're looking for sponsors to actually, you know, purchase the wreaths and Art's telling me no. They're all sold?
All sold.
Well, they're all sold, but we're looking for volunteers to help with them up.
1,906 wreaths this year. There was an article today telling people to continue to buy them. The money that we see after last week's deadline will be used to purchase wreaths for next year.
Tax on, but we're looking for manpower to help display this.
I think the Elts is handling that. Also, what we did last year actually made national headlines on the American Legion Post and was also highlighted at the American Legion Convention of Phoenix and Austin.
So that's December 18th at noon on South Ridge Street. And that's all I have. We have discussion of four ordinances and before we discuss, just want to give a brief, very brief history and Jeremy, correct me if I misspeak at any point. Back on November 1st, the Borough Council introduced four ordinances, making some vote requirement changes to our required apartment zones. Once the ordinances were introduced, they were sent to the Planning Board for comment. The Planning Board met on the 10th of November, sent their comments, some suggested revisions back to council. At our meeting on the 15th, the ordinances were not introduced but were tabled, so that there was no discussion and no vote taken. So as of tonight, the ordinances have been introduced, but they were tabled at the last meeting. And to my understanding, and Jeremy correctly or wrong, the fact that they're tabled means that tonight we cannot take any action after our discussion.
It's not scheduled for us to take any action tonight. That's why it's in the discussion.
All right. So what we will do tonight after our discussion is we will decide what our next steps will be. So at this point, I understand that our council president has a statement to start us off and we'll go from there.
So I was tasked with summarizing several important points to the proposed zoning changes to Brookside Apartments. First, when these apartments were built, they were sleek and modern garden apartments, which attracted veterans and their young families. Many a number of our residents today started out as newly married couples in Brookside. Seventy years later, our physical environment has changed and the needs of residents have changed. Though it is tragic that our neighbors have been displaced and their lives have turned, been turned upside down, Somerville and the property owner of Brookside are faced with a generational opportunity to replace the existing buildings with units that reflect our needs today: sustainability, affordability, and safety, just to name a few. When they were built, the existing structures were right for their time. Today, we need to make sure to take the time to get it right for our time. Secondly, these zoning proposals are to protect the areas in question, which are privately owned, from being rebuilt in a way the town would have no control over currently and in a way that would help these apartments from getting as much damage as they did earlier this year. Doing so would help prevent incorrect and unsustainable land use on these properties. This is different from redeveloping the area, as we are only looking to regulate what can and cannot be built on these properties and setting up general guidelines for what can be built there, rather than having the owner develop specific site plans at this time. Third, there were two new studies released by the state DEP just in the last couple of months that show precipitation impacts due to climate change are on the rise, provided the scientific basis for proposed new regulations. While no new regulations have been issued by the state as of yet, there are some proposals that include inundation risk zone, which would be a new regulatory area consisting of dry land that's suspected to be inundated by tidal waters daily or permanently by 2100. Also, there are proposals by the DEP for elevation standards in flood hazard areas. It is important to note that at this time, nothing has been set in stone as of yet by the state. No matter what we come up with in the future as a borough for the rezoning of Brookside, it can ultimately be superseded by state regulations and we should work with the state to see what resources and ideas we can come up with. While flooding is beyond our control, working together as a borough is not beyond our control. Therefore, these proposed ordinances will not be up for consideration the rest of this year and we'll start fresh and new early next year, working with our Planning Board, Environmental Committee, State DEP, other committees, and our citizens in a fair and open process in a way that will not be rushed through. Further, I can report that Councilman Broom will be taking the lead on this critical project, coordinating the various steps of the process and working with the necessary individuals, groups, and residents to make sure it is done right. I've worked with him in the past on other projects and know he's the perfect person to lead this up. I just wanted to make that statement because there have been a lot going around, a lot of rumors, a lot of misinformation going around. So, you know, I just wanted to say that and try and be clear and hopefully answered some questions before they're even asked.
Question for our attorney now. We still have the tabled ordinances and we have one more meeting between now and the end of the calendar year. So in light of the council president's statement, our course of action on the 20th is not to vote to untable those ordinances, because there would be no time to have a hearing on the revisions, correct?
There's a couple of moving parts. If you wanted to consider those ordinances at the next hearing, or at our next meeting, you could theoretically adopt them or not, as the case may be, provided that certain notices had gone out ahead of time. I think it's a 10-day stipulation. So it's a tight schedule. I understood from the council president's statement that that wasn't the consensus of the council.
I just want to understand and have the public understand the process.
Certainly have the option of doing that as long as it's noticed properly. But if it's not noticed properly, then you aren't in a position to do so. And if you wanted to.
Now, that 10-day stipulation, is that the date that the notice goes out or the date the person receives it?
10 days. Usually you do, usually you do 11, just to state.
The postmark. Yeah. I mean, it's not something Borough often does, because usually it's done at the final point.
Right. There's kind of notices as unique to this kind of zoning change that we're discussing.
However, it's now a moot point, as I just previously stated.
I would just like to add, government sometimes is accused of going too slow. Those of us that are at this table know that. Sometimes in the public, you know, we get that same thing, what's taking so long? Conversely, sometimes, as the council president said, it's advisable to take a step back. And, you know, the state of New Jersey is struggling as well. You know, we're not unique. There are other communities affected by storms. And those regulations will have an effect on what we do, you know, within our own four, you know, within our four boards here. So I, as much as I would like to, you know, give people a place to go back to, to call home, I concur that a deep breath and thoughtful, careful approach is probably warranted at this point. And if I have no other dissent from the table, Jeremy, Kevin will, will raise his hand if there's one to add. There'll be no notices sent out.
It sounds like the direction we provided, it'll take no notice because you're not acting.
If you don't intend to take a vote to adopt or not to adopt at the next meeting, so no notice is required and therefore that vote won't be able to take.
And once the calendar year stops?
Start all over.
We start over, the introduced ordinances disappear and everything we do, we would start from the beginning again.
Correct. Start the process from scratch, if you want.
With new ordinances and the process would continue.
Including notes to the Planning Board as well, the evolved of the Planning Board as well.
Correct.
So the Planning Board will also, it is in our introduction hearing and presumed adoption hearing, indecently, there will also be a Planning Board hearing on the ordinances, proposed ordinances. Presumably, there'll be a redevelopment committee hearing as well in the interim period as well. So plenty of opportunity for the public.
The process will be repeated as we start back to the.
Lots of opportunity for the public to weigh in.
Okay. I know people are going to want to comment and we have one ordinance to introduce and then we'll have our regular public meeting and I'll all, if we're at that point, our discussion on this.
Or not, since you don't plan on doing the actual.
The public, the time to hear that, they are, they're entitled to speak and I don't have a good one. All right. Mr. President, thank you for your concise words and thank you to everybody for giving this some serious thought. It's a watershed moment. I hate to use the word watershed. It's, I should have had a better word. It's a, it's a big step. It's, as our planner said, it's so helpful the years ago. We're not making any new land. We've got 2.2 square miles and we have to use it wisely, safely, economically. There's a lot of moving parts to this and we'll take a deep breath and re-focus on it early next year. All right, we have one ordinance for introduction. 2655, 21106, approving amendment to the Leesville Hathaway Solar LLC contract developer of property known as Tax Block 124, portions of lots 1 and 21 located in the landfill redevelopment area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJ SA 48 colon 12A dash 1 ETS EQ for solar project. I'm having motion for introduction.
Councilmember Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Cabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes. All right. Just a procedural note, we have a large crowd and I would like to have everyone speak and we have people outside as well. So what I'll do is I'll go sequentially to the people seated and then for people outside, if you would like to come in and speak at some point, we'll let you come in and, you know, we have respect for the space within the room, but I'd like to give everybody both seated and out in the hallway a chance to speak. If you would keep your, you know, keep your comments concise, direct them to me, when you come up to the mic, please identify yourself or, you know, name and address for our record. Public session is open and I'll start to my far right. First row. Second row.
Should I step up?
Yes, please.
All right.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Berger. I live at 41 East Cliff Street. I'm sorry to put my back on all of you. It feels good, but. So my name is Michael Berger and I live at 41 East Cliff Street, as I said. I'm going to keep this concise. I appreciate everything that the council president said. Makes a lot of sense to me and I am a little bit comforted by what you said, what you stated. So my house in particular had 68 inches of water in its basement. There's three other houses that are identical to mine with families that have been living there longer than I have. It was quite a moment for us. In one way, it kind of brought us together. I got to meet my neighbors and we kind of came together as a community. But in another, it was, it was quite a tragedy. We lived right across the street from the East Cliff Apartments, often called the Garden Apartments, and only a block away from the Peters Brook, which we all know is part of the recent flood. We flooded. The estimate of eight to 10 houses seems a little low, considering that I know at least of eight to 10 houses on North Bridge Street and my own street that got an immense, immense amount of water. I mean, I was only, it was only a foot till it would touch my first floor. My position is that please do not vote on something that is going to cause that water to rise in the future. As the council president said, and as my best friend, Dr. Brandon Reifel, who works for, as an oceanographer, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, can tell you that this is only going to get worse in the future. We should be taking preventative measures, potentially. If we fill that land with concrete walkways to increase parking or increase the amount of residents that are going to live there, I'm afraid that the next time that that Brook floods, it's going to be much larger problem than it was this time. Absolutely. So I'll keep it short. I had more, but I know there's a lot of really good people who want to speak today. I will say, I cared enough to be here tonight and I will care enough to campaign or vote for people based on this bill. I'm a social worker after all, so I like to speak for others. Thank you guys so much for your time. Appreciate it. And I'll let someone else.
Continue on the second row.
David Mike Kerwin, 8 Ever Drive, member of the redevelopment committee. I'll keep my remarks shorter than it probably would have been. Good to see everybody. I know a lot of people in this room and I think we can have a reasonable discussion on how we can move forward, but I thought it might be helpful if I put a little planning perspective on what we're trying to achieve here. We have a master plan that talks about the comprehensive development objective for the Somerville Borough. It's on page 11. And this is supposed to be the comprehensive statement as to what this borough is all about. So let me read it to you. Somerville Borough is a residential community and should remain committed to that purpose. Housing is a critical borough resource and should be protected. And then it goes on to mention the downtown and the fact that we're the county seat and the hospital and so forth. But we define ourselves as a residential community, as we did in the 1990 master plan and as we did in the 1869 master plan. It is on our planning DNA. Our purpose is to protect our residents from the kind of trauma our fire speaker just talked about. So the very first question when these ordinances was prepared, does these, these ordinance achieve that fundamental Somerville objective of protecting our residents? You're darn right it did, by making, giving the opportunity for an investment that would make those apartments safer, drier, and more sustainable. So, and the big picture, I think we can recognize, I think we can use these ordinances as a starting point. And then we can have further discussions about density and setback and height restrictions, but we're talking about protecting people. And that's why that, these ordinances were introduced. And I, you know, I look forward to the open dialogue to achieve that purpose and I, I'm not, I'm okay with that, I think. Open, we're all in this together. But let's remember the big picture and what, you know, what we're all trying to do is really just protect people. The only caveat I have, Councilman Weed, is the DEP regulations. I think we should take that in mind, but I think fundamentally, we need to do what's right for ourselves and, and figure out what's, you know, what, what our values are and what makes sense for Somerville. I'm very confident we can get there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Continue on the next row, please.
I can't talk about the ordinances, because.
Name and address, sir.
Arted Air 81 Center Street.
Thank you.
About 15, 16 years ago, I think with a grant from public service, there was reforestation of Center Street and the surrounding areas. I had a tree planted in front of my house. I had no idea what they were going to do, but now the tree has gotten really big. I noticed a couple of months ago that every time I turned on something in the, in the house or something cycled, my kitchen lights would either get dim or break. I mentioned this to former chief Rich O'Neil. He said, you have a serious problem. Call an electrician. I called an electrician the next day. He said, call public service. He said, you may have a problem with your, with your neutral. And I called public service. They were in my, well, 45 minutes later, they showed up and they took care of it and said, you have a serious problem. It's caused by the tree. The tree needs to come down. The town planted. Whose responsibility is it for removing it?
It's on the median between the curb and sidewalk.
Yeah, on the tree line, yes.
It's our tree.
Our tree. I have a serious problem.
And we've got your address?
Okay.
Is it the root? Is it the root pole or a minnow?
No, it's in the wires.
It's in the wires.
It's in the wires. As it sways, it rubs the wires and it disconnected the neutral.
PSEG trims the tree.
Well, within, within two hours, the PSE was, PSEG was back and they trimmed, they did trim it, but I'm starting to hear things, I'm hearing it rip against the wires again.
They usually do it once a year.
Well, it's been our experience, when they trim them, it's more than.
They go mild.
Yeah.
You can drop a truck through the pole.
If this, if this is an hazard, would you be agreeable, without flit, would you be agreeable, planting something smaller, more of a battle?
Several years ago, Dick Evans and people, my neighbors from South Side, had similar problems, but that was basically with lifting the sidewalks, with the oaks that were, the oats. I hate the street. I hate it.
So now, can I just, don't want my house to burn? No.
Do we have to wash your arm?
Yep. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Depp. Continuing on. Yes, sir.
Hello, Bill Sisco, 37 Eastern Avenue. I'd like to commend you for this, you know, president, our, your council president for making your decision today. I appreciate that. I'm very glad.
were, the oaks that made us worried. I hate this story. I really, really hate it.
So, now, can I just, don't want my house to burn?
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Derrick. Continuing on.
Hello, Bill Sisco, thirty-seventh Eastern Avenue. I'd like to commend you for this, you know, the president, our, your council president for making your decision today. I appreciate that. I'm very encouraged that Councilman Broom is in charge. I think that's a very good decision. This is a generational opportunity, I like that phrase. What I have learned in the last few weeks is that redevelopment necessitates community input. This is not considered community, a redevelopment, therefore does not mandate community input. Now, we talked about community input. I would like to know how you're going to include the community in this, besides just saying we're going to do it. What are you going to do? And how are you going to commit to the community that we are going to be involved? So, I open up the councilman president, Roger Broom, anybody, but I would just like to know, I guarantee you, how we are all going to be involved. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Oh, well, basically, you know, fresh, fresh start, fresh new year. Certainly get some, like, public meetings, you know, some council meetings, as you can probably tell, we have to be a little bit more rigid up here, but like a, like a public meeting, if we have, you know, I know in the past, the Freeholders Meeting Room has been used, larger venues have been used, or like more Q and A, that's certainly, I would think, on the table right now.
We could probably talk to the schools about providing, you know, middle school or the high school.
Yeah, there are ways to have sort of more Q and A sessions rather than sort of the rigidity of a, you know, public meeting, yada, yada, stuff like that. That's, that's one way. Then we have several boards and committees, planning would weigh in, I'm sure, you know, environmental would weigh in, if I'm not mistaken.
I would suggest to all of you, when you have your first committee meetings in the, you know, in the new year, committee structure, liaison, they want to, like, somebody to be, you know, the president, whether it be the chair of your committee or, never, that committee, committee to, you know, to be a, you know, committees up within that committee as well. And then, of course, we'll have open public forums where, with notice and with the opportunity to, you know, all pitch in. I see that, I want to move quickly, but I want to move carefully. And it's, it's going to be a delicate balance to, to get it right within a timely frame and not to rush to judgment.
I appreciate all that. Does it get a vote? Does it need to be voted on? This is going to be, since it's not a redevelopment project?
No.
No. Okay.
We hear you.
Right, thank you.
No, you're okay. Sorry. Lori Danass, twenty-second Second Street. I really feel for my neighbors on the street and everywhere else in Somerville. However, I've lived there for thirty years and when there was flooding, it was down at two oh six. We are now past Third Street. All the redevelopment is going to be nowhere for the water to go. I live on Second Street, just up a little hill, and I see the water coming. So, is, is there any kind of plan for all of Somerville? I mean, I don't want to dismiss anyone's tragedies, however, rather than us have a tragedy, is what's going to happen there? Because I don't know about anybody else who lives over there, but it is coming. It's not about if, it's about when. We couldn't, it was under the training trestle and it was past, not below Third, it was past the water. So we had all those apartments and now it's because of all the building there, that water, I'm, I'm no, I don't know anything about anything, however, I do know that that water is going to come, it's got to go somewhere. So we're going to start seeing it coming up South Side, up Third, up Second. So, I don't know if anybody's thinking about that side of town, but I am and I'm really concerned and I was very scared. Thankfully, there's, we're not like so many people here, but who would have thought it would have happened to so many people here? So, I mean, we're, that's not even done yet, so there's going to be nowhere to go for, when all that is built at the end of my street, where's the water going? Where's it going? It's going up Second. It's going up Third. And we, we couldn't get out, so we're already, we're already trapped. We couldn't get out because Park Avenue and Main Street and all that was flooded. So, has anybody even put a thought to what's going to happen? I don't know.
First of all, on Southford Street, the property at one fifty-two, the most southerly apartment complex, is in a redevelopment zone. So, as of right now, I don't believe there are any plans to do anything there. I understand that the property is either for sale or has been sold. So anything that is eventually going to go there, and we have a plan in here, Mike, they would have to present as part of a site plan if we got to that point, would have to present a, a stormwater management program, that would have to comply with state regulations.
Right. Is there something we can do as part of that? I'm willing to do any work to research anything. I just don't want this to be, I don't want to be talking about me the next time. I see the writing on the wall. I know there's people here that see the writing on the wall. And why should we, we can absolutely work on what we have, but we should clearly, clearly be working on, so, I'm, I, I mean, I don't expect anybody to tear any buildings down. We have to work with what we have now. I'm not, I'm not asking anybody to tear anything down and I don't know what the answer is, but I am willing to put the work in to find something or, I'm willing to do anything because, I'll tell you what, you guys might not have seen it, but it was scary. I've never in my thirty years, in my husband's fifty-nine years, seen it like that on our side. I was crying for you guys, trust me. It was, I was out at five o'clock and it was horrible. I've never seen it like that. So my thing is, can we, on some other level, be proactive instead of reactive? That's what I'm asking.
I, I think as part of the discussion on these specific ordinances, even though they are limited to that one particular block, or for several lots, I think we're going to have to look townwide as well. We're going to have to do hydrology studies, we're probably going to have to get core of engineers. I'm, I'm a little out of my league here technically, but, um...
We could, and, and I'm sorry that you got flooded, but Ida...
I didn't get flooded.
Ida was the unique storm. When we did the landfill, we added hundreds of millions of gallons extra flood storage and it didn't mean a thing in this particular flood. Yet in other rain events, since we finished doing the landfill, it's held the water. Tembre Street hasn't flooded and two oh six hasn't flooded. So this was a unique thing. We don't need the core of engineers, the DEP themselves will insist on hydrology studies, on anything that we do.
They're going to intuit somewhat, I'm sorry.
Hydrology, it's how much capacity the land has to hold water before it floods. You know, when it gets super saturated, the ground's just like that.
Right.
And, and that's what happened in Ida.
Right. So, so what does that study do then? I mean, okay, we know...
Well, it tells us how much water the land can hold, but then you get into a whole different situation and, and maybe the meetings that we have in public are a better place to discuss it because I, I've been accused of waffling on about this stuff and I could, but it's not an easy one. If you look a found roof with their flood walls, it hasn't helped us. Let's just step back.
Probably hurt us. And, and to the gentleman before me, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, you talked about being, like, involved in this and I know you said that there's going to be a lot of committees. Is there going to be a community committee, a citizens committee, or is, could there be something created so that those who, you know, want to be, you're like another, like a little...
I, I will, I will meet with Mr. Broom and ask him, have information...
But I think we all feel a little bit more comfortable if we were, I know you're looking for an official and I, I understand that feeling, not that you're going to do anything except for what you say, we have to take you through your word, but being involved in that and that also may help me understand the next, what I'm, what I'm so concerned about all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Let's go back to my left, tomorrow. Yes.
Hi there. Hi, everyone. My name is Casey Rendazzo. I'm at one four three Southford Street and thank you for not rushing this process. Really appreciate that, echoing other people's sentiments. But my question is for council president Fred, don't know if that's your last name.
It's Weed.
Weed, nice to meet you. No, it's a good last name. You mentioned earlier about affordability. Could you define what you mean about affordability and how the council will ensure that we'll maintain a socio-economically diverse community?
Sure.
Yeah, so that, that is a loaded question. That's also one of those things, you know, we got, we'll look into more, but generally speaking, you know, people will always ask, because I've always been talking about, you know, quote unquote, housing that's more affordable, housing for blue collar workers, that's sort of been a big, a big thing of mine and it's, you know, if someone asks me a dollar amount, there's never really a good answer to a dollar amount, you know. Generally speaking, growing up, it was always a third of your income. So, you know, it, it's always tough to give an actual dollar amount, but you think, you take a look at wages nowadays and I think the minimum wage will be up to thirteen dollars in January and you look, say someone making a little bit above that, Somerset County, like, to get affordable housing, the thresholds are so high. So, now, I can ramble on, but that's, it's one of those things where you look at a lot of people who've grown up in this town, that have had to move out of town because it's gotten quite pricey, you know, granted, you know, housing prices are up, which is good if you're selling. But this is one of those things that, you know, we're being included in any further discussions because there was an affordable housing component in these original ordinances, in which case then we'd, you know, short answer, you know, I just kind of rambled on there for a minute and a half, but short answer is, you know, that's something we've got to look into and that's part of the open process that we're looking into early next year. We answered your question a little bit.
Let's continue on, right to left. Second row, third row, yes, sir. Thank you for your patience, by the way.
Gene Lepelletier, thirty-two Broad Street. I've been in Somerville for about forty years now. Actually started renting, you know, terraced, so I understand the need for apartments like that. I am glad to see they could not, the council decided not to rush this through. I do have a concern though, because all this rezoning is written assuming that the same person is going to keep this, all those properties together. Once this rezoning goes through, if it does, the property will increase in value, there's nothing stopping that one person from selling bits of it off, in which case the work housing or the way it's all worded now, it's all fit together. And one of those amendments assume that one person is just keeping all those properties. So I think that's something that should be looked at. Just one other comment on our seven, that's included Block seventy-one, Lot six, that's actually sixty-sixth Road Street, it's not part of the garden apartments, but I do have a concern again that all this is based upon that this one person is going to keep the properties together and do something together, doesn't necessarily have to do with that.
Thank you, Dr. Broom. Continue on. Uh, yes, sisters.
Just blue lining. Go ahead, Peter.
I'll get your desk and then you.
Peter Roos, one ninety North Meadow Street. Just a casual observation about Brookside and their apartments. I'm a short timer here in this town. I've only been here thirty-four years. Most of, some people I know have been here forty, fifty years, they've lived their whole life, they've done stuff, they're probably one of them. It just seems a little funny to me that Brookside took down all their trees, you know, on Orchard and Mercer and all throughout their properties and then we get our heads handed to us for Hurricane Ida. And now we want to build supposedly these huge structures and we know, I don't know what's the word, with a small impervial part. It just seems a little funny to me. That's my first comment. The second comment has to do with taxes. If anyone thinks that by building these apartments, our taxes are going to go down, again, I'm a short timer, my taxes have never gone down in this town.
Dujur Rosensky, one oh eight North Meadow Street and on the planning board, disclosure. Couple of questions for the lawyer. Just in clarification, people were not noticed for the original ordinances. Aren't neighbors within a certain area supposed to be noticed if there is a change in zoning that's about to take place?
For certain types of changes in zoning, yes, but the notice is only before the hearing on the adoption, not before the adoption.
But was anybody noticed on this ever?
Not at all, no.
No, because we, there hasn't been a, I'm sorry. No, the short answer, no.
Okay, so they were not, okay. So that's what I want to check. And secondly, can you explain to me why what we are looking at right now is not spot zoning? It's the same owner, we're just looking at sites, other sites have flooded, there are other garden apartment sites, they're just as old. We are only looking at these sites and that, to me, rings a bit of spot zoning, which if we go through this whole thing and we only look at those properties, someone can walk right in and say we're spot zoning and hold everything up. So I just want to clarify what the definition of spot zoning is and if we're not teetering on the brink of being accused of doing spot zoning.
Yeah, I was going to say redevelopment, they were rented, so they covered, I need a developer.
What about the, the private homes that were flooded? How come we're not looking at that land to rezone?
That wasn't the task given to it.
No, given to you, but I'm just saying in general, passing an ordinance that is only for one developer, when there are other parts of the town that got hit just as badly, I consider that teetering on the border of spot zoning.
The, the, along the other developers you're talking about are single parent, which is a different rate.
Yeah.
R one and maybe R two. This is a, this, these are unique. I'm going to say it's not spot zoning, it just doesn't meet the definition of spot zoning. The fact that the other garden apartments are in redevelopment zone is significant.
All the other garden apartments.
Is it all?
Well, there's only other, there was two, and they're on South Third Street and they're in redevelopment.
What about things like, what about things like the condos on Cliff Street that flooded up?
They've not forgotten.
No, but they're, they were flooded and they are a different type of housing.
I'm trying to answer what you said.
No, I understand, that's why I'm asking the lawyer. Like, I think we have to really look, if we're going to be looking at these properties that flooded, we cannot just look at the properties of one developer.
You know, one of the issues too is this zoning isn't specifically and only guided by flood. It's, that's one of the important issues that are, that these ordinances are meant to address, but it's not meant to be as comprehensive, it's not townwide flooding that it's meant to address. Your, your concerns about some of the other properties which are also subject to flooding is perfectly valid, but that's not what these ordinances are for.
Okay, but I'm still saying we're doing this for one developer. So I, that's where I have a problem. I also think that I would like, when a redevelopment committee is pulled together, that it actually represents, I'm sure the people who did this were well-meaning and thought they did the best job they could, but it would be really nice if they represented the diversity of this community. And that didn't necessarily happen this time. And they had the opportunity to use people and they opted not to.
I think that was true.
So, the second question.
Good evening, Mayor of Council. Gina Stravic, sixteen Grant Avenue. Here for several things on my mind tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank Fred for coming out and meeting with the, a few environmental commission members. On Saturday, we walked our field, I was able to show them the work that we had twenty-five, thirty-five trees planted through the efforts of a grant and the MetLife Foundation and their employees. So we have twenty-five trees, thirty-five trees planted down at the fires house field, which will help retain water. Councilman forgot to tell them that, but, in your report, but anyway, I want to share that news and you asked, I'm sorry, your name?
Laurie.
Laurie, you asked what, what you, you know, how you could help and we have to, to have to speak to you later about becoming a member of the Green Team because that's the kind of work that we do in terms of what can we do to, on a small scale, okay? You know, I want to thank the public for coming out too because it's a critical issue and if y'all didn't come, I'm not sure that we have the result we had tonight. But we can all help a little bit, like, good environmental practices. And there's little terms called slow the flow and planting trees to, to maintain water. Peter Roos spoke to that, about that too. So I think that in my, my conversation with, with Fred and Larry and, and Helene from the recreation, from the environmental commission was, we need to have an educational process. As Dujur mentioned, you know, there are a lot of questions, technicalities, so I think before everybody makes decisions, we need to educate. So I advocate highly for an educational process, that we get all the information. So, I advocate highly for an educational process, that we get all the information. I'd also advocate that we really get the state regulations and, and see what, what's going on there. I mean, that is the expertise. And in terms of rush, the comment about rushing, yes, we wanna, we wanna get this done, but we need to get it done right. Now, I, that brings the question about rushing. Where are we at? I've heard the solar farm re-amendment. Can you explain why that was amended? What, what is going on with that project?
Very, very briefly, I won't have to hear about that ordinance in two weeks.
Okay.
There was a community solar initiative through the state, which the proposed developer had applied for, and they were denied. So, they're going to re-apply in the next cycle, which changes some of the lease agreement in the contract that we signed. So, the amendment that we're gonna consider in two weeks reflects the fact that Hathaway is not gonna be allowed by the state to participate at the level that we at all hoped. Kind of it's a minor change in the terms, but we're gonna re-apply through Hathaway next year. So, we'll have more on that on the 20th.
It, it may be helpful in terms of transparency when we send the agenda out, that we also send some interpretation or explanation out of that. I know when we did Sustainable New Jersey, we had talked with that with Kevin, and I know getting the, the ordinance on was a big step. So, thank you for that, but I think there's more that we could do. And also, in light of public transparency, I really think that the Zoom meetings allow people to participate a different way, and although it wasn't perfect, I think that there needs to be another process other than coming up here to speak. Yes, people can watch it now on YouTube, but they, they don't have public comment from YouTube. That was the beauty of, of Zoom, and also, we were able during the Zoom sessions, or prior to Zoom, to send your public comment in writing. So, is there, is there a way to reactivate that and get people to also add their comments remotely? You know, it can be very intimidating, and I've been doing this a while, to come up here and speak, and I think there's a lot of people that are afraid to speak, but are happy to write things down and send their public comments in and have, you know, an answer to it right then and there. So, I think that's something else to think about. The, the website, we talked about that, needs, is in dire need of updating. So, again, public transparency, information, you know, you might not be on a hot seat if you gave more information. So, I, I think that's, those are things to take into consideration as we move this process forward. This isn't just about this topic. This is about good government, this is about transparency, this is about public education and information, and, and it all ties together. So, those are my comments for tonight. The other two questions I had, could you comment on what the, talk about, again, rushing things and timing? Where are we at with the emergency facility on Gaston?
I'll, I'll, I'll help Dr. Brady to channel that, because he's been, you know, leading that church.
Yes, thanks for asking, Gina. We have voted to approve a lease purchase through FD Stone Water. We did not do anything publicly because there is a waiting period in the time an ordinance is passed until it is promulgated. That's a forty-five day waiting period.
Well, that lease was signed like a year ago. That lease was signed like a year ago, and then it was re-signed, right? There was an amendment to that?
This was recently, this was in the last fifty-two weeks, three weeks, forty-five days. Because forty-five days was on, on what?
The agreements are being executed, and they'll be sent to the mayor probably next week for his execution. Once that happens, we're at Christmas, but we're working on finding some dates so we can do a public introduction. They're doing their due diligence now. Hopefully, we will break around on construction.
Nice.
Now, I was on the phone with the, with the public information people today, and mentioned that we're going to sit down very quickly and talk about a public presentation, not simply a rendering, but an entire presentation to give everyone the idea of what the elements are of the project, what it looks like, what it's going to be, who's going to be in it, and that kind of thing. And I would hope that that's coming within the first quarter.
Nice. Well, we look forward to that information and public input. And the, the last thing I have is the, we talked about the wall coming down possibly next to the firehouse and the danger of that. In terms of the Main Street building that was during Ida hit by lightning and is half there and half not, is, is, I mean, that's a Main Street property, town's in view, we got all these events, and we got this shoddy-looking thing sitting there, just like we had this shoddy-looking fence and still have it over by ShopRite by a developer. And, you know, are we gonna condemn that and ask for demolition? We gonna put up proper screening? What, what's the processes on that? Is it safe?
Kevin, now, that's in the hands of the construction office right now?
Are you speaking about the property on Main Street?
Next amendment.
Yeah.
Well, the, 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 the front wall was demolished, the roof and stuff is still there. It's determined to be a public safety hazard, and construction, they take it down if it's not construed as a, a public safety hazard, like a fence.
So, who determines that, Kevin?
My construction.
Construction Department of, of our borough?
Yeah.
Okay. So, has it been evaluated?
I can't answer that, Kevin, I'd have to defer to some.
So, I, I would ask.
I, I could talk to you tomorrow, maybe, I could pull up the details, but I don't have that sort of information right now.
I mean, again, in light of public safety, in light of aesthetics, in light of reputation, I, I think we need to amend that. I wish you all a happy holiday. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Continue on. Yes.
Hello. Mika Deitch, 70 Brookside Avenue. I just wanted to thank you all, and Council President, for not rushing through this, and, you know, taking the time to, like, look at what the community needs and what the environment needs. And I want to second one of the concerns that was echoed about trusting that once the property is, has it been planned for it and the value goes up, that its owner won't just sell it and leave and leave it in a potentially, or just leave it in a potentially unfinished state. I'm, as a resident, you know, don't love the apartments being torn down, but they definitely need some updating. There's a lot of issues, so absolutely, I don't think any of the residents of Brookside are actively against the project to rebuild them. Just wanna make sure we still have a place in this community after it's built. And thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Randy Aronson, 176 North Meadow Street. A few quick things. First, I, I wanna say that Mike Kerwin was correct, that the goal of the town should be to ensure the safety of the residents. So, he was correct on that, and I'd like to thank him for saying that. But a few other things. I thought it was interesting that this evening, Mr. Brady talked about the fact that there was a potential loss of tax revenue going forward, maybe for '23. Now, I could be wrong, but the redevelopment that I've seen here in Somerville, many times what happens is we get tax abatements. So, you're allowed to redevelop, you're allowed to make it more aesthetic, you're allowed to make it larger, you're allowed to make more money, and more money, and then someone like Peter Ruse says, how come they got a tax abatement and my taxes go up as a resident? So, I'd like to know, first off, if we're gonna have this redevelopment, are we going to ensure the fact that for a certain period of time, there are no tax abatements for redevelopment of property, that someone is going to make an enormous amount of profit? They're entitled to make a profit, but I think Peter Ruse is entitled to see his taxes go down while someone else is making a huge profit. So, I'd like to know, are we going to slow down on the tax abatement, on some of the redevelopment that's going on in the town, so we can actually help some of the residents while we're protecting them with, with development that is needed?
Well, I can speak to, to the pilots, as you refer to them. Each project for redevelopment is subject to a redevelopers agreement that is signed between the town and the builder court, and in that redevelopment agreement, it includes the financial statement and the financial parameters. We look at what's called incremental revenue, the revenue that the site's producing right now versus the revenue that it would produce when it's fully built out. And all of the pilots that we have entered into in the last two years that are online and functioning now are contributing significant dollars to the borough budget. The average tax in Somerville last year on the average municipal side was, I believe, fifteen dollars. And I know that your taxes go up every year, but this body can only control the municipal side of the taxes. And we use the pilot revenue that's generated by all the new projects, most of which are on sites that were contaminated and were underperforming in terms of the money they were producing. All that pilot money goes into our budget, and it's significant. I don't have the exact dollar figure in front of me now, but it's, it's in the millions each year, and that goes into our budget so that it doesn't come from the home loan. And if you look back historically, the last five years on your municipal taxes, I would argue that the aggregate amount that your borough tax has gone up is, I can't put a dollar figure on it, but to my opinion, it's insignificant. Not that it's not more. No one at this table will ever say to you, we're gonna lower your taxes. That's just not gonna happen. Forty-two percent of our land in Somerville is taxed exempt, and that can't be changed by this table. Or we can look at the land we have and the development we have in that and craft, you know, significant and responsible financial agreements with the builders. They're paying a good amount in revenue. It's not taxes, it's payment in lieu of taxes, but it goes directly into funding borough services. And without those pilots, I would, I would guess that the municipal taxes would not be as stable as they've been over the last few years. The county and the schools are about seventy percent of your tax bill. I can't speak to that. That's, that's for another table and another meeting. But I can assure you from, from my seat, and I hope I speak for my counsel, that we develop responsible borough budgets and do include every bit of pilot money that we can.
I understand, but we also know neighboring towns that had redevelopment where their taxes didn't go up, while yours say ours will. So, I'm saying, if we're gonna have redevelopment, let's at least make it also responsible for the home loans. Another point, we're a small town, someone mentioned we're only 2.2 square miles. A lot of, a lot of, most of the children in this town walk to school, if not all of them. Maybe their parents drive them to school. For every redevelopment that we have, the 500 units going up behind us on the other side of the railroad tracks, this redevelopment, any redevelopment we have with more space, more apartments, more people, means more cars. So, I'd like to know, are we doing a traffic study to ensure that the children of this town, in the hours that they're walking to and from school, are not going to be overburdened by the new amount of cars, the 500 units behind us, a thousand cars, the new units that are gonna go up in this redevelopment project, that are gonna be driving through town? Do we ever do a traffic study because we worry about our children, not our money?
I know we evaluate the crossings, the, the post that we have.
You mean the crossing guards?
Crossing posts.
So, we, we admit there are crossing guards, okay. Well, what about how many cars are going to be affecting those children that walk from one end of town to the other? That people are, you know, parents are driving their children to school. Do we ever do a traffic study, the more and more redevelopment we have?
Every developer does a traffic study.
And is that, is that something that we can say?
Absolutely.
That's great. I just wanna know. And is there one being done on this new property?
What new property?
I mean, the redevelopment, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has been.
Okay. I just wanna know. And does it show any impact on the traffic congestion?
It actually relieves some of it.
Okay. Okay. I think.
You can learn, but when it's finished, it will relieve.
John Hadley, 8th Glory Drive. I'd like to thank Fred and the council for deferring the ordinances into the new year. This is something that's gonna affect our town for, and the character of our town for decades to come, and so I'd, I'd like to see that it really gets thorough public input. I echo what Deirdre said about having true public input, I mean, presentation, you know, people making comments at these meetings are great, but often, decisions have already been made by the time we even get a chance to make such comments. I mean, I, you know, you have to wonder, had there not been a large public outpouring before the November 15th meeting, would the ordinances have already been passed at this point? So, I would just urge that rather than simply relying on people getting up and making statements at these meetings, that there be some form of true public involvement in the decision-making around these new rules that are gonna be had. And thank you, and have a great holiday.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Frank DeLazio, 74 Eastern Avenue, Somerville. I'm the Assistant Tax Assessor in Newark, and I have a lot of experience in evaluating these properties. And what's happening is, they're deferring the taxes that should be going through the school with these pilot programs, and you're just going towards the municipal line. And a major portion of the taxes are coming on our school portion. That's one thing. Do you have any idea how many units we're gonna have in this redevelopment?
No, because we don't know the density, because that's gonna be part of the, of the new resort.
Yeah, because.
I know what we have now, and I know what the new projects that have come online in the last four years have generated in terms of school-aged children, through the Cobalt, through the Edge, and Soma. I believe at last count, it was two?
Yep.
Two school-aged children. Now, that's not saying that anything new will, will be that same ratio, but if this question came up years and years ago, when we built the, the Edge on Nature, oh my gosh, we're gonna have an influx of students. It hasn't proved that this type of housing doesn't generate, you know, young kids, because there's no place for sandmills or swing sets or, or a playground. That's not saying that anything we do in the garden districts might not be different. It might be a different type of housing, it might be a different population coming in, and that'll have to be a consideration. Well, we can't base planning decisions and zoning decisions on, on the number of school-aged children. That's, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen. So, we, you know, we can, we can talk about it and consider it, but we can't zone something out simply because it might generate kids.
Yeah, but what about the number of people per unit?
That, that is within our.
That is within your jurisdiction.
Right, we can control the size of the units, the mix of bedrooms.
So, we're not having five people in a one-bedroom apartment?
I, a lot of that is, is gonna be a management decision, too. These are, now, these are probably managed properties, and they are subject to state standards in terms of options.
And they were talking about in the resolution about imperious coverage, which means ground coverage on, on the, of the building and parking lots. They were talking about 75 to 80 percent. That was, is that right?
That was suggested, but since these ordinances will not be acted upon. That was suggested, but since these ordinances will not be acted upon, we will start fresh.
Yeah, okay. Because that's overbuilt for the area. Right now, I don't know what it is. Is it 60 percent, 50 percent, 75 percent? But you're going to, 80 percent, that water's going to go someplace, cars have to go someplace. You're going to have a lot of traffic, you're going to have more traffic. Maculata comes in and out of school, you're going to have that traffic, backing that up on Mountain Avenue. And I just think it's going to be a lot more traffic than we really think it's going to be. That's it. Thank you for your time.
I have a number here. Impervious is 41 to 60 percent.
I'll open it up to anyone in the hallway that would like to come in and just start on my floor right and work down.
Danielle Boden, 31 Culver Street. For those of you who know Culver Street, it has the Burke behind my house, and also this Cliff Street Properties are behind our house. So there is a basin behind our home that collects the floodwater, and we watch it rise to our backyard. And it has yet to come into our home, but we are, you said, you know, you talked about the iceberg that the town is when you have a big event going on and you don't see what's underneath. We are at the very top of that iceberg, and we flood all around us. So the homes across the street flooded, we had a river going down our street. You can't leave our house and go left because Cliff Street is flooded. You can't go to the right because High Street is flooded. You can't go down Gaston to Main because Veterans Memorial and Main are flooded. So essentially, the only way we can get out is to go up to Gaston and hit 22. So you can't actually get around the other side of the town during the flood. Now, I understand that the last flood had flash flooding, and that was a strange storm. We had a river running down the street. We had a man clinging to a tree who was washed out of his car. So I can only imagine, I keep saying to my husband, who is a volunteer firefighter in town, we both grew up here, spent our whole lives here, we raise our children here, I'm a healthcare provider in town. I said to him, is this, does this mean it's getting worse? And is this, are we supposed to now fear that we will take on water? And we keep trying to say, well, this was a unique instance. It's a flash flood, right? You can't control where the water goes. However, and I kind of, you know, settled my anxiety about it. However, then the idea of building this giant structure behind us where the floodwaters go and taking up that space, you're going to displace the floodwaters. And guess what? You're now going to invade our home, which right now, we have been safe, not underwater. However, I do not feel secure that should you put a big brick in that water, it's not going to move the water, you know, up the hill to our house and over to the next place that hadn't flooded, and actually, the places that were already underwater will not be more underwater. So I just ask that, you know, I consider myself somebody who gives to our town. You know, I work with the high school, I run the project graduation, you know, for our kids, I think it's important. Our kids, it is a walking town, we have crossing guards. Sometimes those crossing guards don't also show up, and sometimes they have to fill the gaps with policemen. Sometimes you'll cross these cross stations, and there's nobody there for the kids. So as far as more kids, I don't know if that's going to happen. More cars, yes, that will happen. And, you know, the walking school bus that is Somerville, you know, you're putting our kids more at risk. So I just wanted to let you know my concerns as a resident behind one of the properties and know that you have now increased the anxiety that many of the people who have already suffered. Now I wonder, is that our fate if this building goes through?
Thank you. Let's continue down the hallway.
Hi, my name is John Flores, 389 William Street. And for transparency, I am on the zoning board and the downtown Somerville. I do thank the board and the council president for the decisions you've made to slow down this process. I do have some thoughts about how the process should go forward. In January 2020, Governor Murphy issued Executive Order 100, directing the NJ Department of Environmental Protection to integrate climate change considerations such as sea level rise and chronic flooding into its regulatory and permitting programs. In response, the DEP began an initiative known as NJ PAC, Protection Against Climate Threats, to rethink the environmental rules in everything from energy production, energy consumption, and land use, particularly in areas prone to flood. As part of NJ PAC, the DEP is rethinking the Flood Hazard Area Control Act. This is part of the Resilient Environments and Landscapes, RIL, project, whose stated goal is modernizing environmental land use rules to respond to climate change by considering risks such as sea level rise and chronic flood. The DEP is expected to deliver the recommended changes to land use by the end of this month, including stormwater NJAC 78 referenced in the proposed zoning changes. I would think it wise for Somerville to consider these changes to NJAC 78 before amending Chapter 102 of Land Use and Redevelopment. Secondly, the borough's master plan from 2019 states that the Borough of Somerville believes it meets its affordable housing obligation, given the existing affordably priced housing stock. The word obligation is in reference to NJSA 5227D-310, which states, "A municipality's housing element shall be designed to achieve the goal of access to affordable housing for the present and prospective housing needs, with particular attention to low and moderate income housing." The proposed zoning changes state, the ones that are currently being tabled. The developer is encouraged to provide a mix of housing so that the development is appealing to a broad spectrum of public. And a workforce housing component shall be included. Workforce units may be constructed either on or off-site as part of the overall project or in another project existing or under construction in any of the R5, R4, R6, R7 zones by the same owner as long as the units are constructed in the borough of Somerville. The location and number of workforce units to be included in a developer's agreement. In the aftermath of the hurricane, we've lost a significant inventory of affordable and workplace housing. The language in the proposed zoning change is too soft. Encouraged to provide a mix of housing? How about required to provide a mix of housing? I encourage the board to run the affordable housing numbers again to make sure that we continue to meet our obligation. I've only lived here 19 years, but I know that back in the 90s, the challenge was the Bridgewater Mall and how it decimated downtown. There's been a lot of changes since then, most of them good. But the challenge facing Somerville now is managing growth and managing that growth in the context of climate change. I encourage the board to make decisions that make Somerville resilient to climate change and affordable to residents that work and play in our great downtown. And I encourage everyone here to continue to stay involved until we get a satisfactory solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Larry Cleveland, 34 Grant Avenue. Couple of things. Mr. Stradick was talking about property next to man. Planning Board proved that a couple of years ago. They were on us to get that building going before the debt was filled.
Why?
No, no, because they asked me a question. Because you might have to answer the question, what is the delay with Edgewood Properties with developing the property that has collapsed? We shouldn't spend a nickel this time, not a nickel, even if it gets unsafe. Board it off, because they have a plan to build it, they have an approved building, 17 apartments. What's there going?
I bought another property, and they're probably going to apply for an amended supply plan.
Oh, okay. Then that explains that, but as long as it's not unsafe, they own the property, there's somebody we can talk to about taking care of their property.
Will the construction look at it tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, that's a simple thing. You know, we never knew, well, we didn't know that they had another amended supply plan, so we should...
Well, they don't get, they're going to go in front of the board.
Well, no, what I'm saying, they're contemplating. This is no different than the changes that we've had over the years, but that's okay. The term, the direction this is, that she talked about, you probably want a stakeholder meeting. That's probably the best way that we can have an open discussion, where we can hash ideas out and talk rather than just a formal, formal meetings are nice, but there's no give and take. Nobody can shop behind me, you know, yeah, no, you know, we want to be able to talk about it. That's the best way to go. And these things can be moved along. No one is saying that we don't want development, we just want the right development, done the right way. We took the time for Kirby Avenue, we took the time for the land bill. How many meetings do we have for the land bill? Well, I mean, you know, we were at the county building, we did things here, we had all kinds of things going on. We can do this. We want to do this. There's a lot of creative ways to do it. And they'll get their, their buildings rebuilt, and we'll have the proper housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Gallagher, 7 Fairmont Avenue. Wonderful comments tonight, and I think kudos to the council for taking a step forward and saying, you know what? Let's slow this down a little. To Mike's end, as former mayor, you hit these defining moments, and this is one of those. So Larry just spoke about stakeholders meeting. I offer a suggestion. There was a lot of talk about education. I think people need to understand zoning, they need to understand redevelopment, they need to understand pilots. We have a wonderful planning board, and there's representatives of that planning board here tonight. I would suggest that the mayor and council refer this to the planning board. This is their job, to plan for the community. And to the end that you're only looking at garden apartment complexes, I would suggest that this is more than just the garden apartment complexes. This is the Petersburg Freeway and the properties adjacent to it that have had a history and now have a new history of different properties flooding. And taking a look at that zoning from that perspective, you have on the agenda tonight, you're going to be hiring or appointing a new OEM coordinator at some point. What a wonderful opportunity to allow that new person to come in and be a part of that discussion from a zoning perspective as it relates to emergency management. Flood mitigation is big. It's huge, and obviously, we're, we get surrounded by water whenever there's a flood. Let's use the tools that we have. We have a planning board who has already shown that when they give the public tools, all of our redevelopment projects, Dennis, you were there, every one of our redevelopment projects, we brought the public in, and we actually gave them the tools, and they helped to define what Somerville is going to look like over the next 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. What is going on here wasn't the council's plan, it wasn't the planning board's plan, it was the public's plan. They defined all of these redevelopment projects. It wasn't you, and it wasn't the planning board, it was the public. So bring the public back in again, educate them on what zoning is so they understand the different zoning areas. Educate them on what a redevelopment project is. It may be better to have these in a redevelopment area. I don't know, but that's something that you can discuss. Bring it up. Let the planning board, you have to have one entity in charge. And I appreciate the fact that you've pointed Fred and Roger as liaisons, but you can't have multiple meetings of multiple committees because there's too many conversations going on at the same time. It needs to be coordinated. The planning board's been doing this for a long time, and they're really good at it. Let them do their job. Let them plan for the next 50 or 100 years for this community as it relates to flood mitigation. Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the hallway? All right. If I will open the floor, anyone who has not spoken yet? Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. Londonee 210 Cliff Street, also a member of the Environmental Commission. I want to thank you so much for pausing to stop and reconsider and do some thoughtful planning with all of this and throughout the rest of my speech because it's really not worth it at this point. But there have been a lot of people asking a lot of questions. So I went through as Environmental Commission and environmental scientist, and I compiled a lot of the information that we were asking about. Now, the ordinance information is not really all that worthwhile, but if anyone is interested, I was listening to lots and blocks, and I was like, I have no idea where any of this stuff is. So, I mean, I knew where it was, but I was getting confused, and so I went through, and I looked at New Jersey's GIS mapping software. I looked at all the acreage and all the proposed impervious surface as well as the existing impervious surface. I drove around, I tried to take a look at the trees. I have some really bad photos from my seven-year-old because he insists that I'm helping me. And so I have a whole bunch of information. If anyone is interested, just to start the education process, I appreciate that, I think it's about learning. I'm a teacher, I want people to know what they're deciding, whether it's the council or the public at large. So I'm happy to talk to anybody about any of this. I try to make it sort of as simple as possible, but trying to take all these numbers and make it make sense definitely isn't the easiest thing to share with the council, so you also should all have a copy with it. And I took some notes, but I try to keep it pretty much numerical based, you know, how many acres there are, how much is affected. I didn't realize it was 40 acres we're talking about there. 40 acres! I'm so glad you're taking time to consider what to do with 40 acres, because it's definitely not something to throw out there and just, you know, do want to win. It definitely takes really thoughtful planning, so I want to thank you for that.
If anyone wants to leave those outside, people can take them on the way out, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank the public for your patience, for your courtesy, and we will have many more of these in the year ahead. Motion to close, public. Let's move to the second.
Councilmember Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Cabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom. Yes. Fred Weed.
The session is closed. The session is closed.
Hi, I'm John.
Hi. Yes, I saw your first...
Did you mind that you're on live right now?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Didn't want your conversation to go live.
Thank you.
Good point.
Folks, we're still taping, we're taking our conversations into the lobby. I appreciate it.
I'm just waiting a few seconds for a council virtual to return so we can do our consent resolutions.
Folks, we're still taking our conversations into the lobby. I appreciate it. I'm just waiting a few seconds for a council invigilatory to return so we can do our consent resolutions. Oh, Larry, you can't sit that seat. You gotta sit the one down. Just kidding. Six feet apart. There you go. Get the good side. We are at the consent resolution part of our meeting. I would like to pull 329 and 335, council and others.
I agree with 329.
All right, I'll summarize the ones that were passed as a group. 328, memorializing a memorandum of agreement between the Borough of Somerville and OPEIU 32 for a contract term, January 2021 through December 31, 2025. 330 is authorizing refund from the developers escrow for Block 115, Lot 8, known as 131 High Street. 331, memorializing refunding the amount of $7,500 for the SVP application. 332, approving a commodity resale agreement between the County of Somerset and the Borough of Somerville and authorizing myself to execute the agreement. 333 is approving Alex Cleveland, Daniel Bryant, and Devin McKinley as scorekeepers at a rate of $15 an hour for the recreation department. Per game, I'm sorry.
Still learning the kid's name.
Really?
But B, not Brian, Burl, B R L, A N.
Oh, you make that change, Kevin. Okay. 334, approving Allison Gus as an hourly employee at a rate of $25, I assume per game for the basketball gym supervisor position. 336, awarding a contract to Gabrielle Truck Sales for a 2022 Mack M D7. 337, authorizing a refund for a performance bond to Frank McAlieby at Block 75, Lot 41, known as 388 Williams Street. 338 is approving a professional services contract to Tony Galison Partners for architectural and interior design for the new Borough Civic space. 339 is memorializing submission of an application to Somerset County for infrastructure funding through the Somerset County American Recovery Plan. 340 is memorializing pre-parking the lots 1, 2, 4, and 6 from Thanksgiving Day through New Year's Day of 2022. 341 is an emergency resolution requiring approval of the directive of the Division of Local Government Services due to Hurricane Ida for the Borough of Somerville. 342 is authorizing transfer of funds to fund certain line items in the 2021 budget. 343 is authorizing submission of a strategic plan for the municipal alliance grant for fiscal year 2023 and accepting subsequent award of this grant. May I have a motion on those?
Second.
Councilmember Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Kabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Craig Weed.
Yes.
329, requesting that the governor's office investigate and resolve the chronic conditions at the DMV site without further delay to take all the necessary steps to relocate the Somerville DMV offices to another site. May I have a motion? Don't move. Second. I guess, Kevin, it should be MVC, right? It's now changed to Motor Vehicle Commission?
I believe you practice.
I mean, what they call it.
MBS, Motor Vehicle Services.
No, it's MVC.
We all know what the rest of this is.
No. We've had a pandemic. We've seemed to manage that to some extent. We had a storm. We were still recovering, but we seem to have managed that. With it, the state of New Jersey have done the same for the chronic, I love the word chronic, conditions on Roosevelt Place. It's the only motor vehicle site in the state located, not exactly in, but very proximate to a residential neighborhood. And we've got parking issues. We've got garbage issues. We've got traffic issues. We've got quality of life issues. We've tried everything through three mayors to have this site removed. It's been our understanding that Trenton is looking at other sites. But to my knowledge, and Kevin, we've had this discussion last week, you made inquiries, the status of the proposal for new sites, and you have heard...
That it's currently not active.
Currently not active, which is worse than it was last time we called. Because last time, it was still under consideration. So it seems like, for whatever reason, the site has fallen off Trenton's radar.
If I may comment.
You may certainly.
The director of the Division of Motor Dish Services has been out to see us three times. She has made, I won't say promises, but she has been very helpful in suggesting that this was going to move forward. And she has obviously been untruthful. I believe she was nominated by Governor Murphy for the Department of Defense, for which their committee rejected her.
That was a Washington position.
In Washington. So I assume we are now living under the director of the Division of Motor Vehicle Dish Services again. Going to her is useless. I think we need to do two things. Make the governor aware of it and publicize it. Certainly the light of day, because this governor said, I have to be more proactive because I almost lost the race. Well, Bucky, this is one way you can become a little more proactive. Get the damn motor vehicle services out of Somerville, and I'll be more than happy to send a letter that says that. So I'm moved that we adopt that resolution.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any more comments from anyone else at the table that we haven't said?
I'll say very briefly, you know, growing up in that neighborhood, that DMV's been there as long as I remember living on the Schoolhouse Lane. And it's just got progressively and progressively more so with the years.
It's great. You're not living there anymore.
Oh, I hear about it, though.
They can keep changing their name or their...
But the problem remains.
But they don't change their policy.
All right, let's have a roll call.
Councilmembers Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Kabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Craig Weed.
Yes.
Kevin, would you send not only a copy of this to the governor, but to our legislative team as well? Or our assembly person, and our two assembly persons, and our state senator? And I guess the first two. Have our public information officer post this on the website. All right, the last one is 335, accepting the resignation of Officer Liam Pafaro effective November 25, 2021, end of business date, November 24, 2021. Motion.
Second.
Just want to wish the officer, you know, well. Thank him for his service to the community. Police Department and the Police Committee are in the process of interviewing prospective candidates for this opening as well as two others, and we'll have an announcement on some new officers probably at our next meeting. Any comment on roll call?
Councilmembers Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Kabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Craig Weed.
Yes.
And bills and vouchers, Dr. Gray.
Yes, sir. I'd like to pay in the amount of $1,106,486.84, and that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Councilmembers Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Jane Kabuda.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Craig Weed.
Yes.
Before I ask for closing, just a minute of reflection. We're in the middle of a holiday season. There's lights. There's laughter. There's joy. Yet we had another school shooting the other day. So in that community, in those homes, and then in other areas throughout the country, there are no lights. There's no happiness. There's no joy. I'm a parent. A lot of you at the table are parents. A lot of you in the audience are parents. Just please talk to your kids. I can't, you know, I watch the news, and there's more information coming in every day. And it just seems like there's a lot of failure on a lot of levels. Not to point a particular blame, but it's just so sad. And our community, you know, I know I can express from our community to everybody out there, you know, our hopes for a better world, but it's hard sometimes. It really is. So parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, siblings, cousins, just talk to the youth. And get them help if you think there's a problem. There's so many resources out there. And kids sometimes are reluctant to ask for help. But I just can't imagine a holiday season like is going to be experienced in the suburbs of Detroit. And with that, I'll take a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in two weeks. Thank you.